Okay, we are called back to order and we are at item 3.02, Community Engagement. Dr. King?
3.02, Community Engagement. It consists of a recap of the Tyre Wars A-plus Partners update. Mr. Clanton?
Thank you, Dr. King. Members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to be able to present to you a quick presentation and an update on the foundation in regards to the community engagement. Strategy two, empower and facilitate meaningful family and community partnerships, which is part of Plan 12, which is to refine and enhance the A-plus Community Partners Program. There are 12 action steps in total. We are 66 percent complete. And at the time that this report was sent out in October, we were at 4,142 complete individuals who participated through the tracking program that we have. And so there are Level Ones, Level Twos, as well as differentiating between mentors and also the members of the military community who are participants. The next item is Giving Tuesday, which was yesterday. This is a third annual giving event, and the Norfolk Education Foundation has, for the last three years since its inception, participated in this event. And so we had several items that were going on, including working with Elizabeth Mather and Communication from Military, the Gallaret Military Circle. They're doing COAT, No Cold Child COAT Drive, as well as we did a Re-School Supply Drive that we've kicked off with Teresa Brown with 95.7 R&amp;B Radio Station. And so that will continue. There's a box downstairs, I'm gathering items there. And what we're looking at is that in January, when students come back, we will have a big distribution. And we're going to particularly target our McKinney Vento students, our homeless displaced students, to make sure that they have the supplies that they need going forward in the beginning, in the middle of the school year. A lot of times we put a lot of focus at the beginning, but this is an endeavor for that. And as I made mention about the Giving Tuesday, we're still growing and getting, moving along with this one until next year. And we like to really have more individualized programs at each one of the schools and be able to work with them in planning and preparing that so that members of the community can actually come in and do activities on that particular Tuesday. The next item is the, it's not the Noble Hour Community Beta Testing, but that's when you use a template. So noticing that up there. But it is the Tyre Wars Update. And so that was on October 30th, and this was our eighth annual Tyre Awards. And this year, we're at the Half Moon Cruise and Celebration Center. And it may seem like it's, we just had a Tyre Awards. Well, you're correct. We had one in February, and the committee decided, along with the foundation, that it was best to move it in October so we could kind of stay clear of some of the weather mishaps that we were kind of having. And so we actually had that event two times this year. So what the joy, myself putting that together with my committee members. It's a lot of fun. But with that, we also realized that it cut into our revenue stream. And so total, we were able to generate about 55,000 raised this year as opposed to the 93,000 that we raised at the beginning of the school year, but a lot of our sponsors had already committed. And so we're looking to regain that revenue as we move into the next year. And so our annual sponsorship packet, which you will kind of notice here, this is going out with a letter to all of our vendors, as well as other targeted groups within the community, for them to be able to participate in a kind of an individualized program of sorts where they can pay one price of using their marketing dollars and being able to be placed on several different activities for the foundation for the coming year. But individual thank you letters, and as well as this launched our Million Reasons Campaign for this particular year, which we have a $450,000 revenue goal. The next item, and I'll just kind of wrap it up here, is the Principal for a Day Program, and I was mentioning here, we have moved it to the third Wednesday of this year. It will be on Wednesday, February the 18th. And we're looking for community, business, military, and higher education faith-based members to participate with us. As we are also, again, for the third year, we're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and Lead Hampton Roads to be able to use some of those members, which Dr. Savigny is in the class this year. So I don't know if she's going to be a principal for a day, but I'm quite sure you'll champion it for us with your class members there. Also, just to kind of give you a quick highlight, we have made the announcement and solicitation for nominees for this year's Distinguished Alumni Walk of Fame. So we are moving forward with that program. This is a partnership between the City of Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, and the Norfolk Education Foundation, in partnership really with that Come Home to Norfolk Campaign. And so that will occur on April the 23rd. It will also be a fundraising opportunity for the foundation and to support our programming. And so we'll, I look forward to bringing you additional information on that. And lastly, our golf tournament. Dr. Stewart, you ready?
Ready.
All right. So it'll open on January. Registration will start, so I know you want to get your award-winning team together, Dr. Houston and everyone else around the table.
Yeah.
And Dr. Robinson's team, he brings in the ringers.
There you go.
So the golf tournament, but we are coming home to Norfolk, and we will be at the Sewell's Point Golf Course this year. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that the members of the board may have.
Remind us of the date.
That will be on Friday, June the 19th.
Thank you, sir.
We are moving it this year because of graduation, so it will be on a Friday. I've heard that, you know, that might even be a little bit better for us. So yeah, Friday, June the 19th. Anyone else?
So just retire the trophy.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yep. We did have the Faith-Based Summit, and that occurred on, it wasn't in there, it's a lot of stuff running in each other. That was in, yes, yeah, there's a lot of things happening, but we have Faith-Based Summit. And we had about, I guess probably about maybe 100, 120 some odd folks who came through. This is our first opportunity, kind of coming at a summit initiative. And so we'll have a recap of that in a Part Two, which will occur in March of 2015. It was a great opportunity to meet with members of the faith community and our principals and our parent liaisons, and there was a lot of great discussion and a lot of really great excitement. And it kind of, this event allowed us to really kind of bring down the barriers that sometimes preclude some people from wanting to kind of interact with those different groups. And so we're excited about that new endeavor, and Dr. Houston's going to work with us more on that.
When we talk about support resources, there's a lot of potential in really building that faith-based partnership. And so we're going to put a lot of effort and momentum behind that this year.
Yep.
Because a lot of the needs that we have, both for directly involving our children as it relates to mentoring, reading buddies and tutoring, also with support for our teachers, with supplies and other classroom needs that we can't find. I mean, the teacher, it's embarrassing to me, the card that we give our teachers each year, I mean, God bless them, and so many of them have spent out of pocket, you know, for supplies. So there's a lot, a lot of potential in those faith-based partnerships. And so, and administration, they did a fantastic job in terms of their presence there and in the groups with the faith-based partners, presenting, answering questions and talking about their needs, and so.
Yeah, and one of the things out of that that I just want to highlight is that we came out of this particular event with one thing that each group, the faith-based community and leaders would commit to doing between now and March, as well as our school-based leaders would do, to be able to bridge that gap, to come up with different things, taking it in a bite-sized kind of approach rather than looking at all the things that you could do, but what is one thing that that particular, you know, congregation or whatever else could do to support you. So we're looking for some great things and being able to report out some of the great actions that are happening and results for this school year.
Not directly tied to this, but I sat in on Mr. Clanton's seminar on parliamentary procedure for school boards at the BSBA Conference, and I'd like to recommend that be something that he gave to us when it's appropriate. He did a presentation, a workshop on parliamentary procedures for school boards, and it was excellent. And so from now on, if you see me addressing you versus others, that's what I learned in his class. And also, you may hear my emotions be more clearly stated, but I thought it was an excellent, excellent presentation. I think it's something that we benefited from. So at whatever point in time, I think it's something we should consider.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for Collins? All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item 3.03, MOU Timelines. We maybe do this at five and five rather than 10 and 10. Reverend Willoughby?
That was a not-so-subtle hint, you got that right.
Five and five. To it.
Dr. King, Dr. Houston, members of the board, you've received the MOU timeline or a bulleted list of dates for first-time denied and conditionally accredited schools. A list from November 20th to February 15th. I'm not going to go back and read the bulleted list, I think it's self-explanatory, but just to share with you where we are right now, you've signed the MOUs for, or Dr. Houston signed the MOUs for Camp Estella, Lake Taylor, Booker T. Washington schools. And so we met with the Virginia Department of Education Office of School Improvement on yesterday and received our template for developing the corrective action plans for those schools. I think it should be noted that the template that we received lends itself to linking the corrective action plan to the work that's happening right now in terms of essential actions. We had some in-depth conversations about our schools in terms of where they are and where we would like for them to go and the work that we could do to support the schools in getting them to full accreditation. And so we will be, at this point, now that we've had that brainstorm of big ideas for the essential actions that will go into the corrective action plans, I will take that conversation and have conversation with the principals and their leadership teams as well, so that we get a draft that we can present to the public for each school. After we develop that draft, then we will have public comment on the draft so that they can, the public can have some comment on the corrective action plan. From there, we will finalize the corrective action plan and submit it back to Dr. King and you, and ultimately to the Virginia Board of Education as part of the, part of the responsibilities that's outlined in the MOU. And so that's pretty much where we are now. You have dates on when the principals were contacted to give us dates on when that would be best for their communities to have the public comment as well. And you also have the dates of when the corrective action plans are due to the VDOE, as well as the final review for the MOU by the State Board of Education for Booker T. Washington. We are ahead of the, ahead of the, ahead of the game, so to speak, with the MOU for Booker T. Washington because we put that together with Camp Estella and Lake Taylor. Any questions?
As part of those MOUs, and I think Rodney were mentioning this also, that there was requirement of our board, an obligation on our port as a part of those MOUs. So when is it that we would have that board discussion so that we're meeting our obligation? Was that discussed yesterday, Dr. King?
Yes, and there is some flexibility around discussion to prepare that professional development for the board. And the professional development should center on, of course, as discussed yesterday, the role of the board in supporting school improvement. And some of the tenants of that would consist of, one item that's already on the agenda, I believe, for upcoming training, which would be data analysis and the role of the board in understanding and supporting school improvement based on implications for policy as it looks at that analysis, et cetera. Also, second item that was mentioned yesterday is board policy implications as a result of yearly, or as a result of routine formative assessments, like the benchmarks that we reported. And so again, and we touched on that a little bit tonight, you know, what are some board implications on policy or policy modifications. Another example of that was mentioned was effective board governance, which is, these things are not, this is not foreign language to us. And so those are things that were mentioned, and those are things that are going to be discussed with Superintendent Staples as well. However, to answer your question, we are able to provide the recommended items in the corrective action plans around the things that we are doing. And I would think that one of several of those, for all three of the ones I just mentioned, I would suggest or recommend to the board that you'd have some conversation around adding in the data analysis piece, the board governance piece, as well as board policy implications, modifications, and the necessities and essentials around that as you look at the strategic plan and that kind of thing. So that was the gist of the conversation, but again, giving some flexibility to the board to link to what this division needs. And then it will be submitted, and if they see the need to modify, then they bring back edits in there with it as well.
Thank you.
And for Booker T., February.
Have a discussion in January, early January. Yeah, as part of our.
Just for, just a clarifying question. So the corrective action plans for, I guess all of them, but specifically for Tyre Water Park and Lake Taylor that are due December 23rd, do they require board sign-off?
The corrective action plan for Tyre Water Park and PB Young does not require board sign-off because Tyre Water Park received a conditional accreditation.
And what about Lake Taylor middle?
From my understanding, it's a requirement from the MOU, and so now that you've signed the MOU, it's not a, it doesn't require board sign-off, but we definitely would share it with the board before sending it to.
It doesn't require board action?
But it requires board input and feedback. That item number four in the MOU that speaks to the Norfolk School Board and Superintendent, we implement the professional development plan for all boards, et cetera. It also mentions Central Office, where the ARC training is the professional development for the Central Office. However, the professional development for the school board and the governance leadership team is to be determined and recommended by us. And that's why I threw out some of those examples of what we could suggest, because in the corrective action plan that's being developed that will go forward this month, we need to plug in items and topics that we deem appropriate for that so that they can review those. And so.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a feel for the plan overall, because if, I know we have a meeting on the 19th.
Right.
So I didn't know if on the, if something was required, if.
Seventeenth.
Well, 17th.
Our meeting is the 17th.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 17th. Oh, our meeting is the 17th.
Yeah.
Never mind. Because I didn't know if it required, if it required action from us that there'd be a step in there for that. If it doesn't require action from us, but it's still looking for input from us, then do you want us to provide our input in the same manner as any stakeholder would provide the input, or is there some other manner in which we should provide input?
Well, I would, I would suggest two things. One would be, of course, you could provide input as far as from an electronic standpoint. When we update you as the corrective action plan is built, then I'm going to ask that the Office of School Turnaround provide that to you so that you can give feedback and we can, we can capture it and then make edits. And that will be one process since there's a time crunch with this.
Right.
The other would be, as we do the public input and feedback at the school location, I would urge the board to be present and be active as a part of that if you can. And that's another opportunity to provide input and feedback for it as well. And so if you look at that timeline, I think, Dr. Willoughby, it pinpoints when that community piece will take place.
Yes, sir.
And because of that time crunch, that's probably ideal, that's probably the best way to do it in addition to providing it electronic to Dr. Willoughby as well.
What time should we leave?
At this point, there to be determined, but I will get that to the board as they are detailed, specifically the, starting the 16th with Tyre Water Park, and then the other with Lake Taylor. They coordinate with the principals at the building.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3.04, Teaching and Learning, Gifted Education. Dr. King?
3.04, Teaching and Learning, Gifted Education Q&amp;A. You should have received a written report and supporting commentary. Dr. Savigny and Dr. Corbin?
We invited Mrs. Tuck, our academic rigor coordinator, to the table as well, so that we can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Trying to record it, just to be part of it was, we were trying to respond to some of the questions and comments that we were receiving. We just asked for the written report. I'm sure folks may have some thoughts on it later, but we just thought it would be more efficient to get the written report to, to address it and rather than going through another series of oral reports, so.
May I ask, was there a meeting this week on December, Monday?
Monday night, yes.
Yes, there was.
And the purpose of the meeting was, and what was the outcome?
They have, well Valerie, because we have the, the Gifted Education Advisory Committee actually meets every month. They will not have one in January, but it's, it's just a regular scheduled meeting, and I can share a copy of that agenda with you.
And it was at that meeting, if I'm not mistaken, that they probably reviewed the policy that we held off until now?
Yes.
They did, they did.
Yeah, they've sent, actually today, sent some feedback. So at our, whenever our next policy committee meeting is, I know we said we would come back and address whatever feedback they gave us on the policy.
Okay.
Dr. Stewart?
One sentence struck me as kind of awesome. I'm sure it's true, but the second one, that was under the middle school. The second one was a question about high school. The first sentence under middle school, "All students," that's a powerful sentence, and I just was hoping that that was really the case. That's very exciting. "All students identified as gifted and talented, have their educational needs met within the advanced honors classes." That's a powerful thing, and that's very, very cool.
Yes.
Yeah. If all means all, that's very big. The question of dual enrollment, do you consider that under the high school? Those options as any possibility as part of a gifted and talented initiative, the dual enrollment classes?
Dual enrollment options are available to all of our students, not just our gifted students.
I'm seeing.
They are, they do have the opportunity to participate with that as well, though.
To me, I see them as an exciting part, not just for all students, but as part of the gifted and talented. I just don't think you ought to admit that just because it's good for everyone. I think, I think including it is powerful, particularly if folks see the breadth of them with the school that we're considering CTE, with the rate increases going to occur. I just think you have underestimated the power of what you do. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3.05, School Leadership Development. Dr. King?
3.05, School Leadership Development will consist of an update on the timeline for naming and of repurpose IB 38. You should have received, of course, some written documentation. And Dr. Charbonne and Ms. Mather will provide some supporting commentary.
So you have already received the timeline. This, just wanted to make, have another opportunity to put it up here on the big screen for you. We held our first meeting last night, true team effort. This is so exciting to be able to name a new school. And we had about 35 members of the public come out. We hope to have more through our online survey that launched today and the next meeting on December 10th at 6:00 PM. So we would really encourage members of the public who are interested in helping us name this new school to please come out. And Dr. Charbonne, did you want to add anything before we just open it to questions?
Well, it was, it was a great evening. The public came out, but we also had quite a few principals and teachers who came out to support the effort. So I was really pleased to see that. We gave them a brief overview of what's being proposed by the school planning and management team, the SPMT. And then we placed them in groups, and they, they had very lively discussions. So it was, it was a fun evening and a really good activity for the community, and everyone engaged in helping us. We came out with several names and.
Six, six names to put out for survey, and then we're soliciting others through the survey process, so.
Dr. Stewart, may I make it?
Only if you change your policy.
Tell truth.
And so again, key dates here, just the next meeting of the naming committee, December 10th at 6:00 PM at the former Lafayette Winona facility. And then, again, we'd like to invite members of the public to come for the planned public hearing on January 7th, once the names have been recommended through the committee process.
Good.
Thank you. As Dr. and Mr. Jordan said, thank you for the last group. Thank you. Because I know I requested, you know, all that was going on. I think once this story starts emerging and people start seeing all the exciting possibilities of this cornerstone, of our cornerstone, of a proudly diverse community, this is the, one of the cornerstones. There'll be many more cornerstones, many more sites, but all the things that are going on and all the planning, it will help make the narrative in the lead-up to the reopening of this facility, whatever it may be named. It's just, thank you for doing this, and I look forward to hearing future milestones in the, in the development of this cornerstone of our cornerstone.
Good.
Yes, I was wondering where we were with getting an office manager for the school, because I know that that was something that Mr. Smigle had said was going to be necessary as applications started to roll, and then he had to work on the applications.
Well, we are working on a budget. It has not been completed, so I don't want to discuss any of the items at this point. The SPMT is going to work on some of those issues at the next meeting, and of course you'll be there. So you'll hear about what's being proposed, and then we want to give a comprehensive budget to the cabinet and ultimately superintendent, and then at that time, it will be, it will come to the board.
It's, I just wanted to point out, if you look at our timeline, there are a couple of items that are highlighted in red, that an office manager goal is hopefully by January. Would be nice if the board can come together and look at the budget and try to get that ball rolling, amongst many other things with this project, but that probably will be an immediate need.
Okay.
Can I just follow up? So when is it you might have the budget outlined for the new school?
Well, the SPMT really needs to take a look at the items. I know we have some things preliminarily put together and ready for them to look at, but before we bring it to the cabinet, it would really be nice for the committee to take a look at what's proposed. Now, we've already looked at some things, but it's not a comprehensive list.
Right.
And I didn't want to go to the cabinet with fragmented information. So we're following the lead of the SPMT.
You know, I would just stress that it's important, this is, as Dr. Stewart was mentioning, a cornerstone of the cornerstone, and this is a huge element to our transformation agenda, just as open campus was, and just as the reconfiguration of the elementaries. So I just want to get this started off on the right foot with as greatest, with as great a strength behind it as possible. And it is so promising for our students to be able to have this opportunity. It's a new opportunity, and we need to fund it appropriately in order for it to start off on the right foot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments on this matter?
Thanks for your update.
Thank you very much.
Do we just do two in one with the timeline presentation and the meeting summary, or the meeting summary is just informational for the SPMT?
It was informational unless you had a question.
Okay. I did have just a couple of questions for that.
Okay.
In the.
Please, you can have a seat for that.
I can answer a question.
Just in the couple of, one was with the, I guess the.
Just in the couple, one was with the, I guess, the application process, there was, there was something in here that referenced, I thought it referenced, may need some board policy. Is there anything in here that references board policy?
There was a phrase.
Yeah, I thought it was something in here.
It said proposed, it said established or proposed, but they really meant proposed, I think. I don't think you meant established.
Yeah, oh, here it is, yeah. Well, one is, well, I guess the uniforms are asking for a policy review on that, and then...
Yes, I think that, I think the committee wanted to know the board policy on uniforms before a decision was made, so that, that's an upcoming presentation that the SPMT would like.
And then I thought there was one about, I didn't see the board check, you know, the box. Oh, I didn't, yeah, it was, yeah, just, there's an action item, and it said NPS policy review requested.
Oh, that's the last one, yeah, just the uniform.
And then I thought there was also a request around, something in the minutes about the conversation that was being had about socioeconomic diversity, and was asking that the board discuss it, yes, says...
Establish.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know exactly what you are speaking to. The committee is reviewing various models like this in terms of open choice, and open choice that's, that is designed to secure more socioeconomic diversity, and to the point that they're looking at, you know, what type of breakout should we propose in terms of a projection and that kind of thing, and how have other divisions gone about that legally, of course, to, to see that we land close to the, to the breakout that the committee lands on. And so, part of the process is to look at other models where this has been done, because you can, you can, staff schools based on various socioeconomic models and steps, but there are legal implications on how to do that, and of course, across states, there could be some variance, and so, once the committee arrives at what it recommends, or several options, they're going to be working with legal counsel to take a look at that, to determine how we could move forward with it, and then it comes to the board. And it could mean, once they determine that we have established a legal model based on what the legal, based on what the attorneys determine, then we could have policy implications for the board in order to make it happen, if, if there are some snags there. And so that's probably the piece that you are, that you speak to.
But is right now, the, I guess, the conversation or the intent is to try to go in that direction?
Yes, yes, and I, and Dr. Charbonne, you want to speak more to that?
Yes, yes. Well, we've had several discussions, and Mr. Schmiegel has pulled together some research, and did have that presentation at a prior SPMT meeting, so it is in the discussion phase, and of course, we want to look at models that reflect our community and the diversity in our community, so that's how we're moving forward.
We still have, at least I know I do, the presentation that Dr. Collenberg gave to the board, about two years ago, and I know in that presentation, they referenced different districts and different schools that have looked at policies around that and models, models for that, so if you all need that, I can't remember the date, but it was May...
That would be great.
Maybe May twenty twelve, somewhere around there?
That would be great. Thank you.
Dr. Charbonne, remember, we also invited Mr. Schmiegel to join the DeJohn Richter team, so he was actually...
And he did.
...at the meeting on the twenty-fourth, and will be there again, hopefully next week, when Mr. Richter is presenting the research from around the nation in regard to this very topic.
Yes, and he's also contacted Mr. Schmiegel, so they're having some dialogue about this very issue.
Mr. Jordan, at the bottom of agreed responsibilities, under that, the very last bullet, bullet four, establish or suggesting school board policy, I...
Yeah, I think that's what I was...
Yeah, I think the, I think the safest way to go is to suggest rather than establish. Sure.
Suggest, absolutely.
That'd be a wise thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a brief 1006, School Board Policy Committee. Dr. King. Brief 1006, School Board Policy Committee, consists of, of course, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Edward, and Dr. Birdsong. Are you taking a leak?
Sure. I can.
Did I start to sweat, did I sign?
(laughing). Good evening, Dr. Houston, Mrs. Doyle, Dr. King, school board members. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. We have about fifteen or so policies that we sent out to the administration for review, and we've had discussions within cabinet. Also, we met a few weeks ago with the Policy Review Committee, and we had an opportunity to review the recommendations made by the VSBA, and to have discussions around those policies, and so today before you, you have about fourteen or fifteen or so policies, new recommendations, and some older policies that we are presenting to you today. There are just a couple from last year. They are policy JED, as well as the regulation, and as Mr. Jordan stated earlier, we did remove BCFB from the, from the docket, because we are awaiting additional feedback from GAC, and we want to make sure that we're able to review their recommendations within our Policy Review Committee and bring that information back to you for review and advisement. So you have the policies before you, we have administration here prepared to answer any questions that you may have around any of the policies.
Yes, Mr. Jordan, a couple of things. I was contacted by a member of the Special Education Advisory Committee related to KKA, the service animals in, in public schools, and apparently, I guess, some, some time ago, the CAC at that time had put forward some recommendations, and so if it's not time-sensitive, I want to know if that's a policy that we can pull and allow the CAC to, to, to review that, if it's not time-sensitive?
I don't think it's time-sensitive.
If that's okay, KKA.
And any objection to that, or any more?
And then I was going to say, the other thing, as Dr. Birdsong mentioned, the JED and the JEDR regulations that deals with absences, excuses, and dismissals, that's just one that I'll just bring to your attention again, because I know we always talk about that, and so if there is a policy that maybe we could walk through, that might be one if, if the board feels it's necessary, if not, then, then, you know, no big...
Is that something specific you...
I just had a question about it, so.
I just know, yes, let's, I just know.
Just one question, so.
Okay.
And that's about the pulling the driver's license. What gives us the legal authority to do that? Is there a state regulation?
I think it's in the state statute. I'm turning to... It's, it's in the state statute, it's one of the, it's in Title forty-six point two, the driver title. I don't have the exact cite, I'm happy to give it to you.
No, I, I don't need the exact citation, but as long as we're on solid legal ground to recommend that, it's not us, I guess it takes it away, it's the courts, wouldn't it be? So, okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, but just in that, because that's one of the reasons why I thought we should talk through that, because that, I mean, just correct me, that recommendation is something that would come from the administration, correct, in terms of when to, when to go down that path?
Right, right.
Well, of course, the regulation piece, as you alluded to, is, will consist of the steps and the procedures that we would use in order to meet the policies, so the next step would be to, to talk about that further. Dr. Birdsong, you all may have discussed some of those items already.
We actually haven't discussed that, but I'm sure Dr. Lance can address that.
We, the information that we changed, related to that particular policy, just involved, on the regulation piece, we removed a number of items, not specific to the driver's license piece, but noted on, if you saw on the red line copy, where, like, the legal action, that particular section that could address that, but the legal action against students or parents who are in violation of any piece of that, so we noted specific items, or noted there in the change, that it would be to follow the specific items in the actual policy. So, under the clean version, under JED, you're referencing the part, section three, that says, "In addition to any other actions taken pursuant to this policy, the principal may notify the juvenile and domestic relations court, which may take action to suspend the student's driver's license." And, Mr. Cloud, I don't know if you have specific feedback about that, but in other cases where we've had that type of action, there's usually a step that would be taken where it would come through the Department of Student Support Services, for example, where we would review any particular request right that, like that, before permitting that to go through with the courts, and that, of course, would involve, in every case, contacting the city attorney's office through Mr. Cloud, for example, where we would review those to determine whether or not the appropriate steps had been taken to meet, you know, even doing that.
So, how were parents, or students, made aware of this kind of, this could be a great deterrent for a kid to know that, and even a parent, this is a possibility, but it could be a good reason to be in school.
Within the code of conduct, Dr. Lance? We don't put a particular focus on that, but I would imagine that if we made that a little more clear, obvious, that, you know, that would be something that some people would want to steer clear from, but we don't, we don't advertise that, for lack of a term, in terms of doing that.
I know that this is, this, traveling this path is not new, and it's, it's, it's an example of what other states and other divisions have done around this before, so as we build our procedures based on what Dr. Lance has mentioned, there are clear examples of how other divisions have implemented it, so we feel that the real issue is to develop our timeline for training our people, and then having a timeline for rollout and communication to our parents, so I would say, we could, we could certainly be prepared for implementation with it, and it's not new.
Okay. I, I think it's a good thing that, that we're always looking at ways to encourage attendance. I've noticed that at some, with some school boards, when they have a policy like this, we kind of talked about it before, they'll do a first reading and a second reading to give an opportunity for, for public input, and so I don't know if that's something that we may want to consider, is have it as part of our next business meeting on the non-consent agenda, so that way the public is aware of the policy and the regulations, and then maybe come back in January and, and adopt it, if we think it's worthy of trying to make sure that we're communicating to the public, this is what we're doing, and these are some options that are, that are available, to try to make sure that students are attending school.
First of all, it's better.
I think having good communication with the public and get their feedback, I think, would be good, so if, if that's how other divisions have done it, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
So we'll post it on the non-consent agenda for the seventeenth, and prepared to take action on it in the January business meeting.
Correct, if that makes sense.
Is there a way that we can publicize that, information prior to this, because there may be some parents that want to make comments on that in the, in the citizens' comments portion?
It almost follows the, the matrix that we originally did, when we said that some of them would try to, so I would guess in whatever method or manner that we would normally communicate, you know, Facebook and phone calls or whatever.
I think it would be important, though, in, in whatever board discussion, of course, this one would have been ideal, the spirit of it, because it could easily, you know, be interpreted as kind of a quote-unquote threatening action. You know what I'm saying? I think it's important that the spirit of it, as, as a policy, is, it's a, it's a way to encourage attendance, attendance, it's not, it's not another hammer to, you know, to be used in some punitive ways, I, I just think that's important as we...
Well, we had the same issue with, previously, if you remember, with taking the parents to court.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I think we should, I think that because that is a tool...
We've never done it.
Well, we've never done it, but I think we should publicize it, and in extreme cases, actually consider using it.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we'll do, is we'll, we'll take action on it in the January meeting.
There's just one other, if the board would allow, since Dr. Lance is here, on the one dealing with search and seizure.
Yes, sir.
JFG.
Yeah, JFG, can you just kind of talk through, talk to that a bit in terms of suspicious activity and what, what that means?
The main thing with that one, as you know, was just involving adopting the recommended revisions from the VSBA, and that the policy legal references and cross-references were updated, but in terms of, as you may have noted in reading, that it addresses personal searches, for example, and talks about specific cases and appropriate procedures and practices for districts in terms of if there are suspicious activities or reasons to believe that students may have inappropriate objects with them, for example, and it talks specifically about how that must be addressed, and the appropriate staff members who must deal with those types of things, and if there are any specifics, searches that, you know, the practices and procedures that go with that, and I don't know if there's certain legal pieces, Mr. Cloud, you'd like to address, but that involved updating those pieces to make sure that our policy was in alignment with that, whether, you know, it referenced the locker and desk searches, computer searches, the seizure of illegal materials, and things that, based on the circumstances, that our staff members and security officers and others have to address, but I'm just making sure that we are following the appropriate legal guidelines for handling that.
Are there any questions or comments on this policy? Yes, Dr. Stewart?
It is related to Mr. Cloud and Dr. Lance and the data requests that I gave. Following recent student support meetings that have had, that we've had, I submitted through Dr. King a data request, and was, received information regarding BB guns and issues, and I've been pleased with that. Subsequently, I asked Mr. Cloud to explore local ordinances and state statutes regarding that issue, and would hope that at some future point, might have some time on an agenda, perhaps the January business meeting, to discuss possibilities there. We've had approximately sixty actions in that regard. Again, it, to me, it would be contingent upon what Mr. Cloud and his colleagues uncover at the state level and local level, but I would request some time at the Janu, potentially request some time at the January work session to discuss those matters, and I'm very grateful to have that data, saddened as I was to see it all in one place.
Yes, sir.
And thank you.
Can I just ask you to clarify, it was, what was the number again that you cited?
Uh-huh.
And over what period of time?
Dr. Lance has it memorized.
Over what period of time?
I asked for the data over the past five years, and it was...
Just wanted to be clear.
Approximately sixty over the past five years, and that's an estimation.
Right, and I just didn't want people to think it was in one year.
No, no.
So I'm just providing clarity for those who might be watching when you stated that number, that we want to be clear that it's over a period of time.
And at this point, I'm not prepared to request it, but based on what Mr. Cloud and his colleagues uncover, state statutes and local ordinances, there may be something here, you know, the tragedy we just saw of a twelve-year-old in Cleveland with a...
Toy gun.
Yeah. Well, we have BB guns, and we have many students that were, are... Well, we have BB guns, and we have many students that are now sitting outside the classroom because of the mistakes they've made. So, I just want to explore the possibilities there, but thank you for clarifying that, so that it would be clear to all. Over the past five years, we've had a number of them, and I personally am not interested in, in having our retail outlets continuing to make them available, but that will forecast the discussion we've had. That's a personal opinion.
Just one, one question on the search and seizure. It identifies computers, the ones that are owned, that are property of the school, but it doesn't speak to if somebody brings a computer, or if somebody has their personal phone. What is the, what is our policy been on that? Does that fall under the personal search if a child has their phone in school? Is that subject to search, or is that something that they have to grant this consent before it could be subject to search, or is it not subject to search at all?
Well, no, I think it's, I think it's subject to search, based on the same principle as some of the others. There has to be reasonable suspicion to initiate the search, and the scope of it has to be also reasonable, within whatever the reason for initiating it was.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the policies? Okay, Ms. Banks, you have the ones that we are removing. Okay. Very well. Thank you, Policy Committee.
Just doing another time check.
Sorry?
Just doing another time check.
Okay. We have just a few more items here, and 35 more minutes left, 34 to be exact. 3.07, human resources. Dr. King?
3.07 will consist of 2013-14 exit survey results and update to be given by Dr. Myers and Dr. Bell.
Good evening, Dr. Houston, Mrs. Doyle, Dr. King, members of the board. I am here today this evening to report the exit survey results from the 2013-2014 school year. And just to give you some general information up front, there were some changes to the survey last year. It was conducted online, so instead of doing it on paper at a desk, they were given the opportunity to do it online. We also ensured that the reasons for leaving were aligned to the N P S resignation form, which the teachers also complete. And for the response items, where the employees get to provide opinions about various attributes of Norfolk Public Schools, there used to be four response options, and this year, there were five response options. So, instead of excellent, good, fair, poor, they had excellent, very good, good, fair, poor. So, those were some of the differences this year. We had 70% of the employees who left Norfolk Public Schools actually completed the exit survey, which was approximately, it was 345 employees. Of those that completed it, 87% of them were teachers, and about 50% of them were elementary teachers. So, for the first slide, this captures the reasons for leaving. The first couple of slides I'm going to go over actually have the results for the 13-14 school year, and then the next couple of slides, we're going to start looking at comparison data from previous years. So, for this slide, on the right-hand side, you'll see the key, which shows the colors for the various reasons that teachers did leave Norfolk Public Schools. The, the orange portion of the pie are those reasons that we consider controllable. And we did have 16% of the teachers that left expressed dissatisfaction with Norfolk Public Schools. Some of the others that were higher were teachers that left to teach in other school districts, was that 15%. 10.5% of those actually went to teach in districts within Virginia. Then we also had 15% that expressed that they were leaving because of personal reasons, which also included personal illness. On the next slide, these are the selected teacher responses. Again, these are where the teachers were able to express their opinions about various attributes of Norfolk Public Schools. And if you look on, under excellent or very good, there's several items that are highlighted that had the highest responses, which were principal and teacher relationships, communication from supervisor, cooperation of fellow coworkers. And then, on the other end of the spectrum, for those items that were rated fair or poor, we had salary, school climate and culture, amount of planning time, parental support, and handling of student discipline. The next slide shows a comparison of the reasons that teachers have left across the last three school years. And again, you'll see that there, for the 13-14 school year, we've had an increase in number of teachers that have left due to dissatisfaction. The retirement percentage has stayed, has decreased slightly. Then we had personal reasons, and then teaching in Virginia. So, those were the top four reasons that teachers left this school year, and you can see how it compares to the previous years.
How many teachers did we have leave in 2012-13 versus 2013-14?
I don't have that data point for 12-13, so I would have to get that to you.
Because in 2011-12 and 2012-13, we offered early retirement bonuses. So, that might have driven that...
Right.
...that statistic up. Because when you look, you have to compare the numbers. If there was a greater, an increased number of teachers that left this year compared to previous years.
Well, then, the number of teachers, I know that, I don't know the number of teachers that left, the data point that you're asking, but for those that completed the survey, was interesting, for 12-13 school year, we had 347 people complete the survey, and then for the 13-14 school year, we had 345. So, it's very close, the number of those that completed the survey. For the teacher, teacher response comparison, again, it's looking at data from 12-13 to 13-14. For the most positive responses, you'll see there's a direct alignment in those that were provided for 12-13 and 13-14. For, for the least positive responses, salary actually took a step down to number five, and planning time moved up for the 13-14 school year.
What I noticed on your, your opening, I guess, the second slide, or slide number three, where it ranked parental support as a concern for most teachers, and then in the slide that you're just presenting on, parental support for 2012, 13, and 13-14, since we were looking at parent university and trying to get some topics of what our expectations are from parent university, maybe we can correlate what the teachers have concerns about as far as specific parental support, and try to hone in on that on the parent universities.
Okay.
Paul, so, number five, hold it a minute.
Explain that to me again, so you have the most positive, the least positive, and the rankings?
Right, so, on the first two columns, those are the most positive responses, so you have the comparison of 12-13 and 13-14, so...
So, it's what they liked, what they liked the most?
Right.
Okay.
And then, the columns to the right were those that were the least positive responses, and they're ranked in order. So, for example, if you flip back to slide three, you'll see for parental support, that was 64% expressed either fair or poor for that response. Student discipline was 59, school climate was 51, planning time was 49, and then salary was 48.
How many teachers did the survey online this year?
345.
And how many teachers do we have total?
We had, well, this represents 30, 70% of the employees filled this out, so that was 345 employees, and of those 345 employees, 87% of them were actually teachers that completed that.
Okay, and then, for 2013-2014, student discipline is a concern for them, but, and you said the majority of them were elementary teachers, and this is our second year of P B I S. So, how do you, are we drawing any correlations between that, or?
Well, and this is something, one of the, when we get to next steps, this is, one of the next steps is having the executive directors to share this with principals, and so I think some of that will come from some school-level discussion. The next slide, go ahead one more. This is teacher transfers and terminations. This is just, again, giving you some data points that I know that have been shared with you throughout the year, and just to give you a comparison data, I mean, the total number of teacher terminations for the 13-14 school year, it was 353, which was 13.1%. So, this just shows you the percent average of voluntary transfer requests, as well as the percent range, and then the termination percent average and percent range. The next slide is, as part of the survey, they're given the opportunity to, to write open comments, and so you'll see on the left-hand side, those are the positive themes, and then on the right-hand side are the negative things, themes. And what's interesting is you'll see that there are some themes that fall on both the positive and the negative. There's a wide variation in the responses that are provided. And then the last slide, this is looking at the mid-year climate survey, as well as the exit survey themes. Again, on the right-hand side, you'll see the themes for the exit survey that we've discussed in the previous slides, but on the left-hand side, these are the concerns that had the largest percentages expressed on the mid-year climate survey. So, you had workload, climate, leadership in the building, and resources. So, that's just showing you the themes that were discussed with both of those surveys. Another data point that's interesting is for the mid-year climate survey. For, for the statement, "I plan to remain with Norfolk Public Schools for the 2014-15 school year," you had 11.72% report that they disagreed or strongly disagreed with this statement, and then we actually had 13.1% teachers terminating. So, it's just, whether they're the same people or not, I don't know, but it's just close enough to look at those data points. For next steps, as I shared, you know, we'll give, the executive directors now have this data, so that they can share it with the building-level principals, and provide individualized professional learning opportunities for them, and monitor the ongoing support for teachers. The teacher action team that the elementary executive directors are doing with the teachers, this gives an opportunity for them to address some of the current concerns that are expressed in this, because some of the same concerns that our teachers that attend those meetings are expressing are similar to the ones that are expressed in the exit survey. As far as human resources, we're going to continue to collaborate with our university partners. 26% of the teachers that completed the exit survey had three years or less teaching experience, so we want to continue to share with them some of the concerns expressed by teachers, to also help them to build that into the classes that the, the developing teachers are taking. And also, we want to increase the number of student, teacher, and practicum placements, and the number of schools at which these assignments are being made. So, we want, again, have as many teachers that, for practicum and student teaching opportunities within our schools, so they get familiar with our teaching practices, P B I S. It gives them that opportunity to learn what Norfolk Public Schools is about, prior to them becoming a teacher with Norfolk Public Schools. Look at opportunities to decrease the non-instructional workload of all teachers, ensure that building-level student discipline is addressed in a consistent and timely manner, and provide staff members with access to appropriate resources needed to perform daily duties. Yes.
Is there any way that we can tie these next steps into what we have in the strategic plan?
Yes. Both of them are aligned directly to it.
Right, I was going to say, they align directly to it.
Yes.
And then, what are, what is going to be your goal for next year, for your, your baseline numbers of teachers and personnel that are going to take the survey? Do you, do you want to get, what, 75%, 85%?
I mean, it's, it's something that, of course, we want everyone that leave to do. It is, again, anonymous.
Right.
And it's interesting that most of our elementary teacher, more elementary teachers take advantage of it than secondary teachers. I personally, in staffing secondary, I believe that the secondary teachers that leave us are more open and honest in the actual form that they complete, so they don't necessarily take the opportunity to do the survey. And, I mean, we always want it to increase, so, yeah, I'd love to get 75, I'd love to get 80%.
As we were talking about SMART goals for the teaching and learning side...
Yes.
It probably would be good to have SMART goals for this side as well.
Yes.
Since this is something that we have as one of our district priorities, to attract and retain highly qualified and effective teachers, and we want to make sure that they understand that we're not only looking at the survey...
Right.
But we're responding to the survey appropriately, and we value their input, because they are the, as this term has been used before, the boots on the ground.
And we do share with them that, you know, that we use it to plan for future, yes.
Adding to our future work session agenda item, school climate and culture, parental support, and handling of student discipline. In my mind, I kind of tie them all together, and I know we've talked about with the strategic plan, having some community conversations and, and other things. Somehow, I feel like we have to have some tough conversations about it, and not be squeamish about it. These, these results kind of mirror the MetLife survey that they do on teachers, on teachers' attitudes and feelings, and just as ours show that while salary is important, you know, the climate, the culture, the parental support, the discipline, and the support from, you know, administration is what always seems to come out in those reports as well. And so, I don't know if it's something that we can do to get targeted and specific about it. But I think we would, it would be an error on our part to, to ignore it. So, at some point in time, probably sooner rather than later, maybe we can talk about some strategies around that, and even how it ties into the faith-based partnership and all the other things that we've, we've been talking about. But we know that when we look at incident data, it may show one thing, but at the end of the day, it's how people feel and perceive, and if people feel that they are not safe, or students feel that they aren't safe, or if they feel that the culture and climate is not good, it's an emotional thing, it's not always a data thing, and I say that from somebody who has to be reminded of that often. But I think we have to deal with that if, if we have 51% looking at climate and culture, almost 60% around student discipline, which I would interpret folks feeling like this, the schools are not safe, or we're not disciplining students the way that staff feels that we should. And then, obviously, parental support goes back to the whole family engagement piece that Dr. Robinson mentioned, mentioned earlier.
Well, yes, and yes, I'm sure there are, yes, and I'm sure there are a lot of discipline incidents that never get reported.
Right.
That the teachers are just dealing with on a daily basis, just trying to keep kids quiet and calm, and so they can teach. And so, yeah, I think you're right, and I made note of it, and be sure to follow up with Brad Warren and Courtney.
I agree with Mr. Jordan on the wanting to look at this. Some of this may be out of our, our circle of influence, simply because when you look at business, these are the very similar complaints when people leave a job, virtually the same, except maybe parental support. That might be the one that's not, but, but other, other businesses, it's culture and climate, and it, because salary's never driven really anybody to work, and it only does for so long. It has to be the culture and climate. And I always talk about the team... the team, the team, the team. And the more that we push for improving our, our team relations from the top down and the bottom up, that we're all in this for taking, for, for caring for our children and educating children, remind us of that, that's, that's how we're going to cut into these numbers. But remember, this, these are people that are leaving the district, and I, I think that a better gauge of what's going on are people who are staying in the district. So you have to compare tho, those two, but we still see similar, similar findings in the, in the regular surveys too, so. We can work on it, we can work on the team, but it's, we're never going to hit 100 percent.
Thank you for asking, and I'm very grateful for the number of people that responded. There is one comment that I've got to be careful not to attribute to anyone, and I can't do that, but it said, basically, I hope that somebody reads these, and they just don't go in the file. So if anyone knows who wrote that, tell them who read it, and they processed it. And what's critical is, I know that Dr. King and his colleagues, as part of the barrier removal specialists, removing barriers from principals so they can remove barriers from teachers, that if people can tell us these things in November and December, perhaps that we can modify and assist in making sure that someone isn't completing this form next year. But I know that your principals are listening, and I know that our classroom teachers are critical, and it was really encouraging to have so many classroom teachers be so honest, but I, I, I just want everyone to make sure that, and I'm sure that I'm one of many sitting in this room right now, that these were read, these were processed, and that people are listening, and hopefully can hear this in November and December.
And we do have plans to do the mid-year climate survey again this year.
And I was just reminding the board too, that with the, the leadership modules that are coming up for principals, many, much of that will have implications for addressing this as well. So we, we think that we are beginning to equip ourselves with providing the necessary training and support that should result in ultimately, ultimately seeing some changes in this stuff. So, just to remind.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Rose Heywood.
You know, it's interesting to me that when we go to these conferences, and we're talking to school board members and instructional leaders around the state, they all seem to say that teachers are overloaded with work. And so, I'm glad to see that we are seeking opportunities to, to decrease the non-instructional workload of our teachers. Would it be correct to say that a number of these items that we see here in terms of dissatisfaction, like that particular item, are also reflected around the state in climate surveys? Would that, would that be correct?
Well, I mean, when you look at the, the research, and I know that some of it was included in here, you, it's very similar, what you've seen in the research. Now, whether it's specific to Virginia, I don't know, but I can imagine that it's very similar.
The other thing that I saw here, is something that we asked about last year, and that is to provide staff members with access to appropriate resources needed to perform daily duties. Have we identified exactly what those resources are, and do they have funding implications for us here?
And I think some of those conversations are probably coming out in the teacher action team. For this specific exit survey, I didn't see that they listed, I'd have to go back to the comments, I don't really remember any resources that stood out specific. They used resources.
Dr. Charbonne, have you, and during those conversations, or Dr. Malisi, some of the resources that they've mentioned in the teacher action team that they don't have, that they want more of?
The only thing they mentioned was the allotment to purchase things that they need, that they get in the beginning of the year, that they feel they need more for those individual classroom kind of needs, that each teacher specifically wants to do the job in their classroom. Those are the kinds of things they're talking about.
Paper's always a good one.
So that allotment is what, how much, what is that allotment, what is that allotment for each teacher?
That's 50.
$50. I'm good.
All right, 3.08 operations, Dr. King.
3.08, will consist of a PPEA update. Dr. Simmons.
Any think, Dr. Houston, members of the board, Dr. King, I have a brief PPA update for you. Last Tuesday night, the city council voted unanimously to approve the PPA comprehensive agreement and move forward with the construction of our schools by, in collaboration with Steve Ballard Construction Company. Construction will begin January 2015 on our new Camp Estella STEM swim center, and the land is already clear, we're ready to go. And we will also begin to build Broad Creek area next, and Larchmont and Ocean View at the same time, with all schools being completed September 2017. The actual cost that has been approved for construction is $101 million. The agreement includes an option to build a replacement school for Camp Allen, but that is not included within this money right now. It's, it will be decided later. Oh, I don't have a clicker. Yes, you did, yes. Oh, thank you. I hope it works. It does. Thank you. Okay, so this is a timeline for construction of the schools. Camp Estella, of course, will start December 2014, and we should be in that school by September 2016. Broad Creek will start March 2015, we should be moving into there September 2016. Larchmont and Ocean View will start, Larchmont will start March 2016, and we should be in there 2017, and Ocean View 2016, and we'll be in there 2017. So what's next? We're going to have many, many more meetings with the management team that, that's guiding this in collaboration with the city to discuss FFNE, and the other things that will comprise whatever it takes to drive good programming in these schools. We will continue to have these meetings between teaching and learning and operations, and Dr. Thornton, from a finance perspective. In the schools, there'll be lots of informational flyers, the websites for the city and the school district will be updated continuously. In the corridor, the front entrance hallway of every school, there will be all types of informational flyers and displays, so that parents can understand exactly what they're going to be getting. And we will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for each school, and that is the update.
Yes, Brad, thank you. Has there been any discussion about follow-up committee meetings? Because we want to make sure, we, we were promised in the beginning of this process that we would have board representation in those committees.
Let me take that back to the committee, and see if there are going to be some established times for us to meet, and get back to you with an answer.
Thank you.
Okay. And I did sign the resolution just this past week, NRHA, for the land swap, you know, with the, the new Broad Creek school, will be next to where the current Greenkeeper School is, and where the current Rich Bullitt School is, that land will go to NRHA. And so they provided us with the right of entry to go ahead and begin doing site development work there now for that Rich Bullitt School.
I'm grateful, I'm needy, and I'm hopeful. I'm grateful that these schools are being built for these communities. I'm needy, I don't just need for you to ask, I need to know that we're going to be in those meetings. I need to know that school board members are going to be in these get-togethers. As not a want, as a big need, and thank you. And finally, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that the unaccommodated community requests that were made for various things, we know what they were, that some contingency can be employed in the construction. For example, if someone wanted a X, and it wasn't financially capable, we weren't financially capable of including it in this round, that if money does become available, that that could easily be added to the facility to accommodate for what the community clearly spoke about. But I'm grateful that this is occurring. I'm needy in that this is not just a minor request, this is a big need. School board members need to know what's going on with the schools of the Norfolk Public Schools. And finally, I'm hopeful the contingencies are being allowed for.
I'll follow up on that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I was just looking at you, but I was speaking to everyone who's paying attention.
Brad, then.
Just one quick question. How will the different departments be involved in the planning process for the design of these schools?
Well, we, we have a series of meetings planned, and so security will be involved in the security aspects, and principals and teachers will be involved as we begin to deter, make determinations about what goes on inside of there.
Will the different academic departments from science and mathematics and art and PE, will they all have input into these processes?
Yes, and we've begun to schedule those meetings already. We have two scheduled in June, one for Larchmont and one for Camp Estella.
Okay.
We're moving forward.
Thank you.
So I understand Camp Allen is in phase two. How have we communicated that to their community, so that they're aware of this change in the schedule?
The city has taken responsibility for making that communication occur. So that's, that's what they're doing.
Okay, I just think it's important that while they're taking the lead on that, we want to be sure that the community is made aware of that, and that we are accommodating their questions that they might have to follow.
That's a good point.
And on that same line, Mr. Chairman, the public should know that the reason why that's being incurred that way, is, can anybody shed information on that?
The reason why what?
Why Camp Allen is not included in the PPA at this point, at this time. Does anybody, does? Here, here's what I've heard, is that because of the amount of debt that we are incurring to build these schools, that we affect our debt ratio, our, our bond rating by adding Camp Allen. The, the plan is to have Camp Allen built. The way Camp Allen is set up is we still have to pay for the school, and the government reimburses us to do that. So we have to, to moderate our debt service to be able to bring Camp Allen out. But the plan is, from whom I've talked to, they said that that's still a go.
It's just a matter of timing.
Just a matter of timing, right. So I just want everybody out there in TV land to understand that that's the intention, is to, to, to take advantage of the DOD's opportunity to pay for the school, 80 percent of the school.
I would just like to reiterate Dr. Stewart's comment about the need to have school board input, because ultimately, the public sees the school board as the responsible figure body in managing the schools, building the schools, and even though we've signed this agreement, and I do believe it's a good agreement with the city to help construct these five schools, we need to have a seat at the table to make sure that everything is done according to the will of the community, and ultimately, the community does see us as the responsible party, and we should be aware of those, those items, so.
Okay. I still don't like the agreement, but it is what it is. But in terms of the programmatic piece of it, so we know that Lafayette Winona has their SPMT underway. When do we start seeing, or will we see similar models for the other four schools? And also, when will we get an additional update on the STEM component for Camp Estella?
I can tell you, the two meetings have already been planned in collaboration, teaching and learning and operations. We will be meeting with the Camp Estella community and the Broad Creek community, so we're beginning that process right now. Linda, you want to speak to the program and aspect of STEM?
The Camp Estella meeting has been scheduled for January 8, and the Broad, the, there's been a Larchmont meeting scheduled as well for January 13. I don't have the Broad Creek date in front of me.
Says to establish SPMTs for those.
To begin that community input, and we've asked community leaders to identify certain individuals to serve on those committees, so we're beginning the formation of those committees from a, a, a hard-term perspective in January.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Simmons.
Okay, Dr. King has agreed to give his remarks after we've done board matters. One particular matter for the board, Mr. Coleman has requested, as they formulate the advisory committee for open campus, the need for, the desire for a board member to serve on that advisory committee. Is there an interested board member who's willing to? Okay, all right. Dr. Robinson, is your guy? If he misses a meeting, you let Ms. Doyle know. Or he's late. Okay, any matters that are concerned, yes.
So one, do you want to talk about the resolution, the SBA resolution, that we can just read now to address then later?
This is a VSB resolution we've been requested to pass. Connected to that legislatively, there is something we need to do immediately regarding waivers for pre-Labor Day. I'd like to have a brief moment to talk about that. We can't put that off. That's got to happen.
So if we could just go back to the resolution, everybody has that copy, it's on board docs. If you could read it in advance at the next meeting, because we'll take a vote on that officially as a board, because VSB would like to have all districts within Virginia sign up for this basically, and support this, for them to be able to move forward with a general assembly in January.
Is everyone aware of, of the resolution?
I understand it, I support it, it's critical.
I move that we adopt it.
Okay, so next, the business meeting, the 17th?
Yes.
That's when we would, that form of action on that.
Mr. Chairman, co-chairman, there was, at our legislative breakfast, it was very clear that all legislators there said we ought to put in a waiver for pre-Labor Day start. What I would request, and I'm going to read, that we mail a certified mail return receipt requested waiver for requesting that all schools begin a one-week start, five days, and we mail this certified mail at least one week prior to the required ending date for that. This has amazing, amazing implications for the future. I would also like to include in that action, similar to the action we just took for the VSB, sending a template to legislators, a letter template, requesting that their letters follow. All representatives who were there agreed that they would support this with letters of support. So the request for similar motion and the several approval, if the board is interested in it, in mailing a certified formal waiver request for one week starting before Labor Day, therefore, we would end one week. It's not increasing the budget in this item, is critical. And I think we need to do it soon, and I don't think we ought to wait.
Well, this is a, an example of extensive conversation that we've had about more time. What we know is that when you consider the extension of additional instructional days, then it equates to additional funding, and so we're looking at that, and so we're looking at models, and the implication's there. So what we feel that we can get the quickest would center on moving the days back to be able to start before Labor Day, that would not change 180 days of attendance, but it will allow us to be flexible with the calendar. And so, we were planning on building the readiness to submit that, so that the state board, and, you know, this is legislation, but of course, there's a state board feature that we can utilize too. And so, I think that both are important. And so, for us, And so, for us, we plan to submit that waiver, and really, around communication and readiness for staff and parents. The earliest that we could make a smooth transition, provided it is approved, would be to be ready for, what is it, fourteen, fifteen? Sixteen, seventeen school year, we will be ready to do it, I mean, to implement. We would like to submit it now, and then build readiness with communication and getting staff ready and et cetera around the waiver piece. So we're going to move forward with the waiver piece as it relates to submitting to state board. The legislative piece, I think, is also important that will, could expedite what we're trying to do.
Well, they would just send letters of support, supporting our waiver.
Right.
And again, it's not increasing the number of school days.
No.
It's just taking a week off the end of the school and putting it pre-Labor Day, which is pre-testing and everything else.
And allowing for intercessions.
But I would want this to go in before a week, at least a week, certified mail return receipt request, before the closing date for this year. I don't think we can put it off. But this may come in your suggestions for extended learning time, this may be part of all the other things that you've, but right now, I don't think we can put this off till January to talk about it.
Our plan is to be ready to submit that waiver by the end of January, I think it is, when we talk, by the end of January, we'll be ready to submit, which is within line with having it go through the state board.
I just haven't heard from any other school board member, and I don't know if that's their wish.
I'm in support of that, and Dr. Stewart, I'd be willing to work with you to draft a template letter that we could send to our delegation, that they could then submit in support of our BOE waiver application.
I support that.
I just have one question. Why are we, no, limiting it to five days? I mean, if the, that's the part I don't quite...
I'd be open to discuss anything.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I mean, I don't know what your recommendation is.
We've not determined, you know, how many days early start, you know, we're looking at calendars now, and I know that Dr. Savigny is working with Dr. Simmons, because Dr. Simmons is working with optional calendars, and I know that they're together are looking at various models that would allow us to start before Labor Day, to see how many additional instructional days we can get. And then, we want to secure intercessions, a fall intercession, which will be a week, and also, a winter intercession, which would consist of a week, that we can bring students back that need it, in addition to this. So, it's not, we haven't determined days and that kind of thing, but we will have optional, options of calendars that will allow us to do that.
The reason why I said one week is I wanted to get it started, but I don't think we can put this off till January to talk about it. Is there any way we can have time during the business?
Well, we're, we're in support of it. We're in support of it.
Okay, well, what we haven't decided isn't the number of days.
Right, so superintendent's...
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have to have that yet. I mean, I don't think you have to know the exact calendar as of yet. It's just a matter of getting her to start.
I just want to make sure that this is done well in advance, well in advance of the closing date.
So, you say we were happy to submit?
You have to submit a sample calendar within the waiver. Yes.
Okay, great. I would suggest we look at the way the calendar falls too, because if we could end the semester at Christmas break, it might be a little bit more efficient in our testing procedures and our streamlined the school year, which I think it takes it out even further than the five days. I think it's ten, I think it's ten days.
Typically, it allows you to...
I just wanted to assure, we were going to get it done this year.
Sage has spoken.
All right, Mrs. Doyle will preside over the final business. I have to translate this for you. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson. Yes.
He was waving at me.
Oh, you were waving goodbye.
I was waving goodbye. To Dr. Houston, wishing him well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Stewart, was there anything else under legislative that you wanted to address from the outset of the legislative meeting?
Well, there were two items that they mentioned when we were with them. They mentioned support for CTE, and I would want us to take whatever actions necessary to enlist their support. There seemed to be pretty widespread support at that meeting for that. And the whole concept of categorical shifting, and I'm not sure about how that's going, but those were two items that I would not want to ignore, but since I've already accomplished my main mission, and that is to make sure that we're going to get those waivers in for this year, and we can begin working on it. But I can't, don't want to ignore the CTE funding sources, and I'm not sure how to proceed with requesting my colleague board members to be on board with that, and the whole idea of potentially categorical shifting. Remember, two of the senators said, you know, "We would support you being able to do that."
But be specific.
Yeah.
So if I could add to that point, Dr. King and Dr. Thornton, could we ask you to consider how the division would consider being specific about SOQ flexibility to match our resources with needs and demands? That was our legislative priority number seven, and that's where Senator Wagner said, "It can't be just open-ended or open season, it needs to be very specific." So if you could both look at what we would need or want, and therefore, what flexibility we would need for SOQ spending. Dr. Thornton, you look puzzled, but...
Well, Dr. King and I'll talk, we're going to find out what it is we're trying to accomplish with this.
And then we could follow up again with the CTE as well.
I just want to make sure that it's done, because they were on board, and I was very pleased at their support of what we're trying to do.
Now, if we could cover one more item under Board Matters before Dr. King does his remarks, and that is, you have your milestone board here, do you have a summary document?
Yes.
That you can share with folks as to what is needed, what we agreed upon, and what we expect in January and months to follow?
I want to test it out with Dr. King, and then it can be created by Ms. Banks, because he created a very exciting Christmas time, and Dr. Gabriel and I noticed that we had several items that people, that the people had said we wanted to do. We understood them, we supported them, we talked about them pretty thoroughly. Now I've placed red dots under action. Now, the first one was, by January, and all of the next several items are by January, so that we would have it by the business meeting to consider in the budget cycle, that by January, you would be, Dr. King, providing options for increased pre-K4 for all. And Ms. Banks, I'm going to hand her this, so she can type this, so that we can all have this in writing. Is that still?
Yes.
That's what your understanding was? This is my understanding when we talked about it. By January, we would provide options for increasing starting learning time, not just the shifting of some time, a week or more, pre, but by January, you'd provide us some options, and I added to after-school, Saturday schools, summer schools. Just as a note, personally, I would hope you would be able to consider at that time what many high schools in the state of Virginia, Fairfax did a year-long study of the start time for high schools. Just, is that still a possibility by January? Again, we can consider all of that as we prepare our budget, and again, that has a dot. The third one was, provide options for beginning to address poverty targets, beginning to address poverty targets.
Right, yes.
Options that you're looking at. And I know that some of these may be related to DeJohn Richters and redistricting and a whole variety of things. Again, these are all by January to allow us to consider all of these as we're crafting a budget that does several things. It meets the MOU, it meets what we need to do for focus and priority schools, it meets what the judge told us the state wasn't doing by trying to take over our schools, a whole variety of it. And provide an update by January of the partners, at least for the focus priority schools. Not, I know you're ambitious and you want to do them all, but give us a sense of how we're doing on that. Later than that, there was some question on what next steps we might have for, not necessarily for January, because I'm sure your wife would like to see you some over the holidays, but next steps for open campus. There was, somebody's going to do something that's good for us on CTE, you know, we don't know who that is, it's Santa Claus, but you're not in charge of that. And there was an efficiency study that Dr. Thornton was going to take a look at to see if there's anything relevant. But the critical things that I've put so far, if they're still in line with what you think you can provide us for January, that's a summary, and I'll give this to Ms. Banks, she can do a draft, and we can see if it meets, so that everybody knows what we understand and support. And again, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to do all these things. You know, we're working on a lot of immediate solutions to immediate causes. Many of these are essential solutions to essential causes that'll have long-term benefits. It's great to work on the immediate causes and the immediate solutions, but some of these, learning time and whatever, are essential elements. Thank you.
Under Board Matters.
One point.
Yes.
During the meeting, there have been a couple of things that I've recommended for future work session, and I still like to see us try to get to those at some point in time. But in January, I like to see if we can try to have a two-hour work session, and pick a couple of topics and just focus on those topics, and see whether or not the world comes to an end if we don't have a five or six-hour work session.
Okay. Very good.
I'm sure you're willing to go there.
Yes.
All right, no data requests then.
I hate to see that.
I mean, again, if you remember, just for the record, if you remember, the gifted folk gave us a written report, we survived all right. The policy committee gave us written things, we survived all right, so we can get some things, and if we have questions, we can submit the questions and get the feedback.
Yeah, I think tonight was very good, actually, with getting some of the reports in writing, because we all do read and prepare well in advance of these meetings, so you are getting a prepared board. So thank you in advance for those reports, which I know frankly, this past week, we're over Thanksgiving Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I know you all worked very hard over the weekend to get us prepared for today, so thank you. Okay, I think that's it probably for Board Agenda, I will turn it to Dr. King. Any comments, thoughts, before we close out?
I would just simply like to thank the staff for their hard work and getting us prepared in a way that you all just described, because they did put in time, and certainly, we want them to spend time and enjoy their family and loved ones and all of the above, like I said to them before they left for the Thanksgiving break. So, I think I'd be remiss if I did not say to them again, thank you for the work that they have done to get us to the point of being where we are now, and to provide some clarity for going forward. That's simply the closure for my remarks.
Anybody on the board have any final comments, thoughts for the greater good, before we adjourn?
Just we're a work in progress. We got to consider that, we're just, we keep pounding it out every day and trying to improve in every way, and as Dr. Houston would say, we just moving the chains.
Very good.
Another first down.
Good. Well, thanks, everybody, for their work and their dedication and commitment to today, and for our students moving forward. Have a good evening. Meeting is adjourned.